The same material but are kept separate. This is done to allow adults, most of them are teachers, to collect material and insight that they can bring back into the classroom. It does not mean that the adults and students don't intermix. Up until the New York City portion, students and adults have separate buses, separate meal times, separate schedules. New York City is a much smaller group utilizing a single bus, sometimes two buses depending on the numbers going. But I just thought that that was a celebration even though it is delayed, that both of our seniors that were planning on going can go with next year's kids. So we were very happy about that. One of the girls is even working with her college right now on planning ahead of when her semesters would be because not all colleges are on the same semester system so that her advisors know going into it that she would need 12 days.
Yeah, it's about 12.
About 12 days next June. Are there any questions for Cody or I about that group? That student group? Buy more coffee. When you see the cart, that's where you purchase and you tip well. That is the rules of the world.
Or Little Caesar's Pizza.
Or buy Little Caesar's Pizza pizza. Okay. All right. Margie and Shelley Johnson and I in the last couple of weeks have worked really hard on getting our master schedule concept ready for fall for the junior high and high school kids. Every year, the schedule has to change a little bit depending on the feedback we get from students on what they indicated on their registration forms when they turn it in. It's very interesting that, for example, some of the more rigorous courses that juniors and seniors would take like AP Calculus or Physics, Chemistry, you know, those kind of things that you don't hit until your junior or senior year and are optional because kids usually have met their graduation requirements by the time they hit those upper levels of math and science. But depending on the kids that want those then depend on where it sits on the schedule. For example, last year, kids who wanted Chemistry, none of them were in choir, so I could sit at fourth period with choir. This year, all of the kids who want Chemistry with the exception of two are all in choir and most of them are also in band. So that meant that Chemistry, one section of it could not sit where choir or band sits. So it's a, it's very interesting. I have a magnet board that Mrs. Johnson has provided to me for doing that so that as I'm working through the data, you can constantly be moving those magnets on where they fall. Most people get hives when they do that kind of work. Personally, I love it because it's a puzzle to solve that benefits children and there are no emotions involved. Because usually this time of year, emotions run high. The only people who talk to me are the ones who are angry or want something that is unreasonable usually. So it's nice to be able to work on something that can really help kids in the long run. So what juniors and seniors want to have drives where classes sit on the schedule. And I'm very pleased that there is a big group of kids who want Spanish II. There is a big group of kids who want Spanish I. Ms. Rose is going to be very busy. A lot of kids with Chemistry, not so many with Physics, but we, with Mrs. Johnson's help, we're able to push more underclassmen into pre-calculus also. So we have a small group of AP Calc and a small group of AP Bio, but the AP Biology is bigger than it has been in the last three years. So it's nice that the ebb and flow of, you know, what kids are asking for despite them filling out these forms at home without us, you know, giving them that oh-so encouraging look that sometimes they don't check the same boxes when they're not sitting in front of you. But the good news is, is that we have that schedule finished. And within the next week or so, as Margie is helping us get it put in the Tyler system so that we can print out paper schedules, those of you who have children in school will get a copy of that schedule in the mail with a copy of the master schedule itself as well as next year's calendar. So that should be in your mail in the next week or so. Another thing that is a big task as the second semester ends, fourth quarter of the second semester ended, you know, on June 2nd and then teachers are busy, you know, grading all those final projects and things to get things in the Tyler system. And you all got report cards already for your kids too. The next task then is for John and I to coordinate running eligibility for fall. Fall sports, football, volleyball, and the junior high sports of girls' basketball and I think junior high tennis too, I think cheer, pep band. Those are the things that hit first. Some FFA and FCCLA also. And kids who fail any course, whether it be elective or core, if they fail the quarter or fail the semester, they are not eligible until midterm, which is September 24th. A lot of kids don't really understand that the two school years are connected, which is why the letters that I sent home periodically during the fourth quarter that were about kids with Ds and Fs because I included kids who had D-range grades too so that families would be aware of how close to that failing margin their students sat. So I was worried at the beginning of the stay-at-home. I was very worried, as I reported to you, that a lot of kids were not going to take it serious and were not going to do the work. And I was very anxious about what fall schedule would look like because of the number of kids that may have to repeat. The good news is, is with the support of the parents and all of the project wraparound coaches that we had and your support, that we only have three high school kids who are not eligible and that is less than we have when we've been in school full-time. So I think that with all of the extra help, you know, there really weren't a large influx of kids not passing or that would need to repeat classes in the fall. So those letters did go out already and families, of course, can call anytime they have questions. Any questions about eligibility or master schedule? The last item, I just want to thank you. This has certainly been a very interesting year and I am really proud of where we sit with how crazy even our board meetings have been. I'm very happy to be sitting here in front of you this evening in person. But I wanted to thank you, Mr. Gaiman, the board, our coaches, community leaders, you know, everyone who helped with the project wraparound. And that was where I had, you know, a handful of kids with each caring adult to check on them. And that made a really big difference to a lot of kids. At first, when we put that together, we really were targeting kids that were failing and were showing very obvious signs of distress and depression. But it was interesting, the deeper we got into that data, even our kids who performed very highly and are very good students, not all of them were doing really well emotionally. And everyone benefited from having a caring adult contact them at least once a week. I also wanted to thank our superintendents, the board, and the health department allowing us to have some high school students in the last few weeks of school. Having seniors in who had to finish projects and having any at-risk kids in high school who needed some one-to-one support, it really made a big difference. And all of those kids who came in, only two of them ended up not passing one of their classes, but it was because often they would not take me up on the offer of coming in and continued to excel in blowing me off digitally when I would reach out to their parent or to them, telling them of their time that they were coming in. So yeah, a few kids won't do what they, what you always say, but overall, it ended up being a very positive experience. So we took something very lemon-like and made lemonade out of it only because of all the support. So I just wanted to thank each of you for your support in that endeavor. So that is the end of my June report. Any questions or comments?
Oh, very good. Thanks, Winnie.
I'll start by piggybacking on the wraparound. I had three students that I contacted every week and I looked forward to it. I don't know if they did so much, but it was, it was a positive experience. And they did answer pretty much every time I called each week. There was only one time I had to leave a message and then got ahold of that student later, but it was a very positive experience again for me and hopefully for the kids too. End of the year enrollment numbers. We ended the year K-6, 192; 7, 8 was 56; and high school with 111. Moving on, lunch program. I talked about it earlier and I want to thank these ladies and Mr. Lobdell, one gentleman, for their help. And Mr. Shepherd too, he was, he helped quite a bit to fill in. But Kathy Campbell, Cheryl Gerch, Michaela Mead, McCormick, Mary Beth Foster, Julie Shepherd, Dustin Lobdell, they all did a great job preparing meals, getting them loaded, bringing them out into families. The lunch program is doing very well. The number of meals she served, for a while we were averaging over 200 and then it fell below in the last probably two weeks. Numbers fell off a little bit, but we were still probably 160, 170. I think the last day of school, we served about 180. So it was very good. I want you to know too that the reimbursement for that was about two and a half times what it typically is in a month. So in other words, if we're reimbursed $10,000 for a month of lunches, we were reimbursed like $25,000 for a month of lunches. So financially, it was a very good time for the lunch program to look, you know, that silver lining. So I mentioned some purchasing that's, that's happening for the lunch program. Well, also, in addition, not having to put general fund dollars in the lunch program, we're going to take some lunch program funds and use them to relieve some general fund or even put some in the multi-district agreement. We can only carry 10%, no, 33%.
Yes, in the, in the lunch fund, you can only carry 33.3% of your expenditures in the lunch program. Anything over that has to either be transferred out and back into the general fund or I, at my little workshop yesterday, found out that they can be transferred into the multi-district, which we can earmark then for them if they have something that they need to purchase.
Oh, that's really good.
So I was.
Hang on to some of that.
Yeah, that was awesome. That was good mention.
Well, and unexpected.
Yeah, the reimbursement rate.
Holy smokes. I made, I made Jackie do it twice. Said, are you sure? This is what the reimbursement is? Because the first month that was, the month of May, April, when she did the claim in June, was $25,000. And normally, we get about 11, 11,000?
Oh, my goodness.
And the year before was only 8,000? And so, yeah. And then when we did it for May, or that was when she did for April and May, and then May for June was just as much, if not more. So I made them.
It's been a long time since the lunch program is.
Yes.
Never has since I've been here.
Yeah, it has. About two or three years ago, it was.
But not, not to that extent, it was just.
No, not to this extent. But part of this is that reimbursement rate for the last three months was.
The summer program rate made a huge difference. And I didn't even know when Jackie was doing those reimbursements is that there's an even higher reimbursement rate for homemade. So not only did we get the reimbursement, we also got an extra reimbursement for everything that they did for homemade. And I heard from quite a few clerks and superintendents at some of these meetings that their lunch program just went down the tubes because everything they did was prepackaged and not homemade. And I know those ladies were, they were so tired and they worked tirelessly getting those meals together in the afternoons and in the mornings and, yeah. It was pretty amazing the way that they ran that program this, the last two and a half months.
How much do you think the overage was total over those three months?
The overage?
Yeah, the, the amount that you're going to carry, that you're going to carry forward.
Well, we've spent, what?
It probably is looking at $30,000. And that's.
That's, that's.
That's my, that's my best guess right now.
That's not with the capital expenditures or that's with?
Well, that would be with the expenditures. So I'm really looking that we're still going to have some that we're going to have to transfer. But yeah, I'm, I hadn't spent so many.
It's a good time.
Which was fun for them.
So again, if you see Kathy, Cheryl, Mary Beth, Michaela, any of those people I listed, they did work very hard. You know, you all know Kathy and what she's like and they just continued on without a beat. She's like that every day. So really pleased with what those, those folks did. I thought I'd let you know, our school was part of a PACS program this year. A management system, a way of doing business in the classroom. And we are going to continue with the implementation of the PACS in the elementary school. We have another training, an advanced training for that. All of our staff and actually even Jenny Lezner, our new classroom teacher we hired, has been trained because she was a PACS partner last year. So everyone's trained in that initial training. We're moving up a notch in terms of implementation and some data collection and things like that as we continue on. So we're now, we've, we're now a PACS exemplar school. Summer projects, not a lot to report. We've got a roofing project going on this summer state. We're at phase four, although we labeled those phases like 1A, 1B, but it's basically our fourth year of doing this. They're back over at the elementary school. So we have this summer, next summer, and then the roof will be completely revamped at that point. So there, I haven't got a date for sure. I'm assuming it'll be July again when it's nice and hot and hopefully not raining when they choose to come and do that. If, I, I don't think there's a possibility of doing this, but if we do have a little money left over, I would like to finish the LED lighting in the high school. We're about halfway done with that. I, quite honestly, I don't think it's going to happen because we're not going to have the funds to do that, but there's a potential for that. I thought I'd talk about summer program, which is our summer counseling program that I'm, we just call it summer program, but that's a summer counseling. We've been approved by the county health department for that with a plan for Bev and Dustin to be able to meet with individuals or groups of up to three students following protocols or procedures that would be typical in the situation. Social distancing, offering masks, sanitizing, cleaning between, and so on. We're planning on starting that next week. I met with Dustin and Bev on Monday, kind of laying some things out and trying to get a calendar together because it's, their program's going to overlap summer school as well, which we're on course to start that July 13th. That plan was also approved by county health. Remember, we have four teachers, Bryn, Heidi, I'm sorry, Ms. Bryn Rowley, Heidi Snyder, Mary Smith, and Lisa Peever for students in K-8, although I think we only have one eighth grader and the rest are K-6 kids. We have 41 kids that we're targeting for summer school. I talked about earlier at a meeting, I can't remember which one, if it was the June 4 special meeting, about the CARES money, the federal money that came down because of the pandemic. We got about 62,000 total. There's a share that needs to go co-op, 10%, so 6,200, which will leave us about 55, 56,000 to deal with. I'd like to earmark those funds for paying for our summer programs as we. The funds are essentially designed to minimize the impacts of the school closures. That port, we'll, we'll be able to afford the summer program and then also look at hiring a tutor or maybe two for next year in a one-year-only position to again try to help fill in the gaps that have happened or expanded because of the distance learning that we're in. Additionally, I mentioned a $10,000 donation from Three Rivers at our last meeting. And I'd like to use that $10,000 towards that same end to helping close that gap down because of the pandemic that happened. So anyway, summer school is set to go, summer program is set to go. Gym, our gyms are open now for, open gyms, yeah. Open gyms or if community members want to come in and shoot around in the, in the gym. And there are also open gym times for people who are outside of school. Mr. Shepherd met with coaches, got everything outlined. We've got a calendar with times and people are signing up for it. He went through all the protocols and so on. That's going well. Same thing with the weight room opening up. That seems to be working very well. I haven't heard a complaint yet about that. People are going at their scheduled times, doing their thing. We've got our janitors coming in at times to wipe everything down, but it's so far so good in that. So lots of positive feedback about getting things opened up and having, and those facilities available. Driver's education, which is also happening. Mr. DeRosa got a plan approved by the county health. He's out, you've probably seen him in the white van. Driver's had a sticker on it. Doing that in two-hour stints with two hour, with two students at a time. That's going great. Mr. DeRosa did everything he could to try to get these kids to get their licenses on time. I, I think, Mark, we talked about the day, that today accommodations he did for tests when they had to take the test. He had them on the football field with a clipboard, sitting on the grass on Saturday to take the test.
Oh, is that right? With a laminated test?
Yeah. Had them spread out all over and to be able to, to get them to that end. Mr. Worley also got shop opened up on Tuesday nights, correct? More than Tuesday, isn't it?
It's kind of.
It's flexible.
Yeah, flexible.
Indicated a couple of, couple of students have been in to work on projects. So that's also glad that we have that option too. So, so far in the reopening of the school, it seems to be going, going well. Budget update. We're almost to that June where we have, end of June where we have a definitive where we're at. I think we're pretty close in that the high school remained ahead of last year's numbers and we're right now about 4% ahead of last year, which means there should be some money left over in the high school budget at the end of the year, which is surprising. But the fact, I mean, there's a few variables, things that didn't happen because of the school closures and so on. The elementary school, not quite as good. We're going to be about flush as we were last year, anticipating about a half percent left when, when, when all is said and done. I think there's, we still have some things out there and pay, another payroll to run and a few other things like that. But all in all, we, we finished ahead of what we projected, which is, which is good. I'm just going to talk briefly about next year because there's so many unknowns. I get asked a lot, what's going to happen next year? What are you going to do next year? I don't know. I really don't know. And that's true. There's, there's not a lot coming down from the state. They have two task forces that are meeting and have met and are continuing to meet, but they haven't put out any information yet that I could find. So I'm waiting on that, just waiting to see how things go. Want to have a district leadership team meeting in July and start talking about things. I have with my staff, both all staff and then through the elementary leadership team meeting, started that conversation and just, you know, started thinking about what went well, what worked and what didn't work and what would we do if we have to do this again differently? And how can we be prepared if we have to do this again differently? If we're open and everything's good to go in August, what can we do to prepare the kids if we have to shut down in November or March or whatever it is? So there's a lot of thoughts going into it, but nothing definitive for sure. There's just too many unknowns at this point in time, but that will definitely be on my plate probably not long after the 4th of July to start creating Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, Plan D, and so on. You know, I talked to Mrs. Hammond today and my leadership team about some ideas we have to be proactive in terms of students and attendance and illnesses and things like that to be able to say, you know what, we're taking these steps to keep our staff and our students, our families safe. And hopefully, doing things like that can allow us to be open or remain open or whatever it is. So I don't know.
Talked to the governor's office five days ago and they said there is no timeline. Absolutely none. Trying to get the road going, so we called them and they said there is no timeline. They have no idea.
Any questions for me?
Oh, good, Chuck, thank you. Okay. Patty?
I don't have anything. Chuck covered most everything that we've been doing, so.
Okay. Well, I guess, um, then we'll move to, does anybody have any questions for Patty? I'd like so. All right. Well, negotiations committee, I guess we met last night. I guess I have some questions for Chuck to go over with it. We, we were pretty close, we think. I thought we had a good meeting last night in Milford and I'm pretty happy with where we're at and the direction we're going. And so we scheduled another meeting for Wednesday at 7 o'clock, the 20, next Wednesday, 24th. And so we're hoping to clean it up then. I guess, uh, I don't have, you guys have anything else? Marion? I guess the only thing I would like to ask, I know that Chuck is, must be getting some pressure from the non-certified staff. So down the line, I would like to ask if we could, if we give you some time to talk on the non-certified deal and ask that we wait until we finish with the teachers first. Anyway, you know, it's a tough year because we're trying to take care of everybody and still be fiscally responsible for the taxpayers. So anyway, that's all I really have. Does anybody have questions? Melanie or? Okay, you good with all that, Melvin? Okay, good, thanks. All right, well, moving to, um.
Before, I forgot to mention my schedule for next week. Maddie's finally coming home. We haven't seen her since January. She's supposed to come on March 24th, 25th. That obviously got canceled, but probably Wednesday we have to go pick her up in Bozeman at night. Like she flies at like 9:00 at night. But I won't be around Thursday and possibly Friday too to be able to spend as much time as I can with her.
Sure. You'll be able to answer the phone again because I appreciate Patty and Chuck's answering the phone last night with some questions we had.
9:00.
9:00 at night. Oh, God. Yeah, no problem with me, Chuck. All right. We'll move into appointing, outlining Bynum District Trustee.
We only had one applicant for that, Jerry Stott. So Jerry, you might want to unmute now. Okay. Yep, he's good. Yep, okay. So I, do you have to have a motion to, correct, to appoint Jerry?
That we probably should.
Yeah.
I would so move to appoint Jerry Stott as Outlying Bynum District Trustee.
It's been moved and seconded. In a discussion. I guess Jerry's a pretty good, because he's been with us for a while and I think he'd be very, very good to keep him. I guess is the only thing I have. Any other discussion?
Sign all his paperwork, he's official, take his oath.
Well, he's got to, I'll swear him in.
Right now?
When he comes in.
You have to vote. Do you do that over Zoom?
Can I, I can, I can swear you in over Zoom, I was.
If he's not swearing, my, I guess where I'm going with this before we vote, you guys are okay with it, can he vote if he's not swearing?
No, he can't, but everyone else can.
But I can swear him in.
On accident if he's not swearing.
Oh, as soon as he's sworn in, he can vote.
Yeah.
So anyway, I guess just want to clarify that. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poked, same sign. Thanks, Jerry. Okay, go ahead and swear him in, get him eligible. Back eligible.
Where are you, Jerry? Oh, there you are.
Okay, there he is.
Oh, there you are. Nice background. I thought you were inside of a truck somewhere, but you're, you're in the mountains.
He's in his living room.
I got late, back pretty late from East Glacier last night, so.
Okay, are you ready?
Yep.
There's a hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will.
Discharge.
Discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
There you go. I'll just have to have you come in and sign your elect, your, your certification next time you're in town.
Okay.
Thanks, Jerry.
Yep. Another new thing to go through online.
Yeah.
This is how I was, she did our clerks over Zoom.
Oh, cool.
I saw the superintendent's summer conferences too. Is it virtual?
I'm sure. All right, we'll move to consider hiring student maintenance assistants.
Yes, we have Jace Castle, I'd like to recommend for this position. He's worked on the summer crew before inside. Now he's primarily outside, although like today with the rain to start the day, he's inside helping out. So he'll be mostly outside but a little inside help too. Jace is, right now, we're, we have him scheduled for Monday, Wednesday, and Friday to be able to work.
I'd so move to hire Jace.
I'll second that.
Been moved to second, any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign? Motion carries. All right, consider renewal of, uh, property casualty insurance with M S P L I P.
Yeah, that's a tough acronym. You, you read my narrative. I, I spoke with Kevin Smith last week asking about a renewal. And he indicated at that time that, um, it was going to go up. To what degree, I did not know. And so we got the paperwork, was it yesterday? It was yesterday, Tuesday is when we actually got our renewal. Well. Yeah. In our contract with them, we're in our third year of a three-year contract with them. It says right in there, no increase greater than six percent. But then you go further down unless this and this. And, uh, so here's, here's basically, so I called Kevin as soon as Patty came over with these numbers and he said you need, you need to talk to Brandy Garber and, uh, so, and she said, when I got on the phone with her, I, I was not very happy. Um, I think I was fairly nice, but fairly assertive as well with my displeasure as to this. She said I fully expected lots of, lots of phone calls and you're the first one I've gotten. So we probably talked for what, twenty minutes with Brandy, maybe more. Here's what happened. With everything that's going on in terms of weather events and all these other things around the nation, around the world, insurance is, is going up and it's tougher. Well, our pool in Montana, and remember this is a pool, um, they've had a three hundred and twenty-five percent loss ratio, the pool itself. And so they were basically going to get dropped by Travelers, the, the company that they ran the whole pool through. And they actually were dropped and then through some negotiations got back into. But that required an increase in values for the properties in the pool of six hundred million dollars. So from three point three, or three point two billion to three point eight billion. We're talking all the schools that are in this pool. So because of that, increase went up. So essentially, we, we got our, we got a six percent increase on our twenty-five thousand dollar premium, twenty-six thousand premium, which is good, uh, in the big scheme, thing is good. Plus then we got, Patty and I are calling an assessment. They were, they were pretty sure that that's not what we should call it, but that's what we called it. An assessment for forty-two hundred dollars in addition to the six percent increase.
For what reason are they staying?
That explanation I just gave about they've got six hundred million to make up in values. And so value goes up, premium goes up that they pay, so the pool has to foot the bill. Now, I will tell you this, um, and she, and started with her and then I, I had made a couple of phone calls. She said, you are actually, if, if your increase is six percent, you're in good shape. You're in really good shape. And I'm like, yeah, right, whatever, until I called and found out some other insurance costs. There are a lot, I mean, their base where they were this year, we were twenty-six, they were thirty, thirty-five, forty and.
Except we were looking at switching, you mean?
No, 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 same company, same company. Our rate was a good rate. It was a good rate. And in, in, in email I got today from the competition, Montana School Board's M S G I A competition, he says right in there, I hear that the pool is seeing a thirty to sixty percent increase in cost. Well, our overall increase was about twenty-four percent.
And ended up being twenty-five percent.
Uh-huh. So we're even under that, what the competition is saying. So yes, it went up. It's thirty-one thousand dollars now instead of twenty-six thousand dollars.
Plus the forty-two hundred.
No.
Well, that's with.
With it.
Twelve hundred with the.
Forty.
It was twenty-six and went up to something plus the forty-two hundred.
It went up, no, it went up to thirty-one.
Six percent plus forty-two.
Yeah, it's six percent plus forty-two.
Twenty-six went up the.
The six percent is like twelve hundred dollars, thirteen hundred, whatever it is.
Twelve hundred plus fifteen.
Yes. The, the actual increase was fifteen, fifteen hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty cents. But when you add that in with, the premium includes a four thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollar for increase in property T I V. Property values were increased by eighteen, one point eight million dollars on our side. And our five, five-year loss ra, ratio was only seven point oh seven percent. We just haven't had any losses. So yesterday, as I'm reading through my forum, and I am reading what some of these other schools, forty-five, sixty-five percent. And so I didn't, I, I, I guess I didn't feel like ours were our assessment on that. And it's, that's, it's not, it's.
It's not good, but it's better than a lot of people, for a lot of schools.
But is that a one-time reset? We're gonna get this again next year?
Well, next year, we're out, we're, we're done with our third year next year. So we're going to shop around.
Okay, that's what I wanted is the pool, that we have one more, one more year.
Yeah, twenty twenty-one is our last year with the, them.
These are guys we met a couple of years ago.
So it's thirty-one thousand, what?
Oops, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Well, and Brandy also told us that the six hundred million dollars, um, M S P L up here, whatever, they took on the three hundred million and then just asked, put the, the schools that extra three hundred million. And I'm guessing it was based on your loss ratio and, um, what your assessments are or what your percent increase would, would have been. So it was thirty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars.
So it should be thirty-two thousand.
That's actually not bad, I guess.
Yeah. It's an increase and, and like I said, we, I was not real happy with Brandy and it, it wasn't her, but, and I explained that my frustration is not towards, towards insurance period, whether it's health insurance or property insurance, it's just insurance.
Insurance period, the biggest scam in the world.
Yep, and so, but anyway, that's where we're at and, and I, I mean, we're in our third year of the contract, so, we'll be able to shop around and, and see if it's competitive or not in the future.
Okay, does anybody else have more questions with that?
Could've been worse.
Happy about it, but anyway.
But I really think we were one of the very, very lowest on the, on the assessment, yeah.
All right, well, is anybody wanna back on it or?
I would so move that we, uh, renew our property casual insurance with M S P L I P. And we really have no choice, we're in contract.
Right.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign?
That was Jerry.
Yeah.
Good job Jerry.
All right. Consider extension of policy series nineteen hundred.
Yeah, this is, um, just in case. Uh, a conversation with Mark today, and I, I wanna clarify my position on this and, and hopefully it's illustrated through what we're doing. My intent is not to keep this place locked down, definitely not. My intent is to have kids back in school, if we can have kids back in school. We're, the county health has been great to work with, with our summer program and, and weight room and so on. And our plans are pretty solid and, but she's flexible as we change. We started limiting the weight room, just to give you one example, eight, eight of our high school students with a coach. And then we had more than eight kids wanting to lift and so we bumped it up to ten and then bumped it up to twelve and, and she's been good. Yep, yep, as long as you do this, this, yes, okay. So my intent is to not, with the continuation of policy nineteen, a series, uh, nineteen hundred series, to try to keep the school closed down. That's not the case. Here's what I'm hopeful, that we don't have to use this, any of this series again. It's just there. But if we have to use it, we have some protocol. And so a blanket at this point in time would allow us to access that if we need to. And if we don't need to, we don't. And it's all gonna depend on, you have to know that's not gonna be me making that decision. It's gonna be a health person making that decision. Can we do this? Because this is what we wanna do. Can we do this? So. And they expired.
So why do we need the policy if they're gonna make?
M, M T S B A is advising us to have it to protect us legally.
They're just trying to throw a safety net over us, advisory.
Liability.
Which is what we pay them to do, I guess, in a sense.
Probably have to have it to secure funding too, probably.
But it expires in a few days.
Unless you extend it.
So if we were to extend it, we, um, I understand that policies would be in place or that would be available to us, but would we, would we as the trustees still have to, if, if you decide, if, if you were giving guidance to, to do so, would we still have the opportunity to weigh in on that?
Oh, yes, yes.
And to change the policies or add and delete what you need?
Yeah, and, and, I mean, if you wanna open up policy nineteen hundred series and go through the policy and say, we don't want this one anymore or we want this one, I'm fine with that. This again is just, just in case, we can do that. We can dissect them, we can look at the options, because remember, a lot of them came with option A, option B, things like that, uh, and so on.
Yeah, and I guess that's, that's my concern is, would we be bound to those? Well.
Board policy is board policy, yes. It's no different than any other policy.
We can vote it out at any time.
You, yeah.
We can schedule a special meeting and vote it out.
My big concern is, is, you know, we adopted those with given pretty heavy-handed, not a whole lot of information. Obviously the stuff around this whole pandemic changes, there's been a lot of new information. We're gonna know a lot more in another sixty or ninety days. So I think having the opportunity to look at something and say, yeah, maybe that was not something that was needed or makes sense or we can do better or differently or more efficiently. And I very much think that would be in our best interest to be able to do that.
Maybe we, I mean, I don't think it matters if we adopt them until our, until our August board meeting to cover the summer program, which I think we do wanna cover ourselves legally, but if we could maybe then review them at our Aug, right before we start school. Because hopefully things will change. I think that's something we need to have on the agenda and have.
Yep.
That's probably gonna happen.
So your motion could be with a date in mind, right?
Maybe we're.
Yeah, I, if you do it, well, if you have an idea when you're gonna meet in August.
I mean, we could even probably say August thirty-first and then amend it beforehand, right?
Well, we could just, August of board.
Board meeting.
August of board meeting, okay, yeah.
I'm good with that.
My own.
I like the, I like your comment, Joe. So I need a motion.
Wanna crop good? Okay, I so move to adopt, or to, uh, extend the nineteen hundred series as we have it now until through the next, uh, the school, August, um, school board meeting. With putting revaluation on the agenda.
Just a procedural question, are we, do we need to put a date in there or are we okay leaving it open?
I think we should put a date in.
Okay, that's, okay.
Then we can, then, then we have to revisit it. It does expire. It will expire on that, on that thirty-first.
I think August thirty-first.
Let's just say August thirty.
Do you wanna have it, how, before the first day of school?
Okay, before the, what's the?
Well, PR twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-six with kids. How about the twenty-fourth of August?
As I said, the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Okay.
How you doing?
Sorry.
I would love to see him.
Guys, all my scribbles on here.
Do you wanna amend your motion?
Okay, with adding in the date, August twenty-fourth is the end.
Through August twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Twenty twenty, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, very good. Been moved and seconded, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign? That was Jerry, keep forgetting Jerry. All right.
Gotta slow down a little bit.
Consider change to the, um, K-12 Spanish teacher contract.
Yes, in visiting with Rose Carlson about the ability of, of the possibility of going full-time. She's interested in that for the twenty, 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 twenty-one school year. So, um, I would, I would love if we could extend her contract or her F T E time from the point eight-five to point one point O. Just so you know, the cost of the district, uh, five thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars for that point one five percent increase in F T E. It's a great opportunity for us to expand on the elementary music program. Love to do that, so.
She's doing a great job on it.
She's doing a great job. And remember, she's our Spanish teacher.
Yeah. So how much more influence will she have into the elementary music? Another day?
It'll give her one more, well, actually gives her two more periods every day plus Friday. Cause she was, she taught until from twelve fifty to two thirty, Monday through Thursday. And so now we're having her until three thirty plus Friday.
That will, that will work great.
Yep, it'll give, it'll go from one session of music per class, per week, to two sessions of music per week.
Do you want to do her contract, Patty?
She did, I'll just have to.
Amend it.
I'll just have to amend the contract.
So she does the Spanish in the high school, the, the other half of the?
Yes, her mornings in the high school teaching Spanish, afternoons in the elementary.
I got, I got the lion's share of her point eight-five. Cause I got to have the, sorry, I got to have her every day.
It'll be good and it gets more music in the elementary.
Yeah.
Well, it's nice to see that the Spanish classes have all.
And then there was the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to hire Rose originally to be one point O F T E, but she didn't want to.
At the time.
At the time, yeah, when we heard originally, but, so. She's ready.
She had a daughter at Homestair. And her daughter starts kindergarten, starts kindergarten.
I can understand why. All right, well, so what do you say, guys?
I would so move to, uh, change her from an eight point eight-five to a one point O F T E.
I would second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign? Motion carries. All right, consider offering contracts for relatives of board members. I think we need to do these one at a time, don't we, Jeff?
Yes.
Let's start with, um, go ahead Chuck.
Well, I'll start with Kristi Henderson. Kristi Henderson is an aide in the elementary school, does a great job and I would like to continue having her work there.
I would so move to hire Kristi Henderson.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, hire Kristi Henderson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign?
Abstained.
Okay, we'll move to Cheryl Passmore.
Cheryl's been working in the high school, uh, done a great job in the resource room with, with Mrs. Gibson and we'd love to have Cheryl come back again.
I would so move.
Say.
Go ahead.
Marion, seconded?
No.
Joe.
Oh, Joe, who did?
Pat.
Oh.
Guys are too, too far away in here. I need to hear names. All right, any discuss, or I'm sorry, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? If not, if no more discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose, same sign?
I'll abstain.
Motion carries, Bev Jaeger.
I don't know.
I know it. Are you ready?
Yeah, Bev's great and I got, I talked, I, I talked earlier about her, meeting with her and Dustin to talk about summer program. She's excited about the possibility, with whatever form it takes this summer, because it's a little messed up. But, um, we'd love to have Bev back again to work in the June high school, so.
I'd so move to hire Bev.
I'll move.
Oh. Jerry, you're seconded then?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. We're gonna leave you with, uh, the motion, first motion, Jerry.
Okay.
All right, um, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion about Beverly? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose, same sign? Abstained, I abstained, Melanie. All righty. Now we'll move to consider inter-local agreement with Montana Digital Academy.
Yeah, let's use some acronyms in this one. M T D A, uh, is updating from an M O U to an inter-local agreement. Uh, this is change, really has nothing to do with COVID nineteen, the pandemic or anything like that. It has to do with the Montana Pupil Online Personal Protection Act. This change actually holds the, um, M T D A more accountable for privacy of student information and so on. M T D A is a wonderful resource and.
Could not do high school without it.
Right, and so I would strongly recommend the board to. Right, and so I would strongly recommend the board to approve this, um, interlocal agreement with MTDA.
Cybersecurity, probably, yeah, most of the change.
I just.
What does an interlocal agreement, I'm just curious, what's the difference, instead of a memorandum of understanding?
It's a little, a little more formal.
A little more formal?
A contract versus a. I would say, um, that's probably.
Just a little more formal.
Yeah.
Okay. Did, did you move?
No.
I would so move then to, um, form an, uh, interlocal agreement with the Montana Digital Academy.
I'm seconding.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign? Okay, moving to consider student accident medical insurance program for twenty twenty one.
Is that, that one, I'm trying to.
This is the one you, what's it?
Mrs. Gerber.
Okay, yeah, this is the same company we've used in the past, and I would recommend that continuation.
The premium for this, we choose to have the medical, accidental medical benefit for all the grades. And, um, yeah, it's two, two thousand three hundred thirty six dollars and ninety cents.
Any increase?
Should we wait and make absolutely certain we're going to have sports?
Not necessarily for sports, this is for playground accidents.
This one covers all.
Correct.
Right.
They both cover all.
Yeah.
The catastrophic.
And what'd you say the, I'm sorry, you say it too fast and I can't write, my dyslexia.
Twenty three thirty six.
Twenty three then.
Thirty six.
But in response to Pat, that's a, we're gonna have to be a half full blast, but we're gonna have four.
I can tell you, Mr. Shepherd and I visited about that after he went to, um, the classroom meetings, and MHSA's full steam ahead as of right now, looking at the fall, that's.
They don't, they don't know anything either, you know, he, he talked about they have some tiers in place, and if, if this happens, we may have to cut out our, um, non-conference games, or we may have to start later. They have like six or seven tiers, you know, when it gets to tier six and seven, that's pretty much a no season. But right now, they're just full steam ahead, you know, they're planning on starting the ball, and, but I don't think they know any more than anyone else, so.
Got to be prepared.
Yeah.
Just put it in your folder.
So you need a motion on this, right?
Yes.
Yep, yep, for sure.
I would so move for the student accidental, accident medical insurance program for the twenty twenty one school year.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose same sign? Motion carries. Consider student catastrophic accident insurance program. How come they don't file that smaller?
I don't know. I'm blaming it on Patty. She sent it to her and then she must have done something to it.
I'll need better glasses for that.
I didn't do anything.
This is, again, is a renewal, and this is with the Idaho and Montana schools catastrophic accident insurance program. Patty, mine doesn't have what this costs on my paperwork.
Well, there's a minimum premium for this one, and it's six hundred and fifty dollars.
Does it get used?
You know, I don't know, Michaela usually takes care of any claims that come through. She will send me, if somebody gets hurt in football, if they fill out, the coaches will fill out that form, then she forwards me the form. And I know they all get the little pamphlets that go out in the, in the, in the fall. And I know some of them come in and get them if they don't have them. So I know that it has been used. It's not something that gets used a bunch.
Yeah, what's the difference between H and R?
One's a medical insurance, one's a catastrophic.
This is catastrophic, okay.
I don't want any catastrophes, but.
No, we don't.
Because we use the H the more often, and, and whether it's PE, you know, or just, um, junior high kids outside, horseplay, you know, kind of things, it's not just sports, it's just having young people in the building to.
Well, and I, I know a lot of parents ask if we have insurance that'll cover if somebody gets hurt in the gym. And this is what they, this is what they would use to turn in their claims for. And there's a certain amount that will be paid, and then there's a certain amount that should be paid by their insurance. So it's in addition to what they have.
I would so move then to consider student catastrophic accident insurance.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign? Motion carries. All right, so we'll go to, um, multi-district agreement and end of year monies.
Yeah, this is something we do every year in June. I'd ask the board to make a motion to allow administration to fill the multi-district fund using end of the year monies. I would also ask the board to give the administration the authority to fill reserves and excess reserves as much as possible with end of the year monies, and also give administration the discretion to spend end of the year monies for supplies or projects, even though probably not going to happen. But mostly, it's going to be multi-district agreement, um, to be able to fill that.
I would so move per narrative.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? We pretty much got everything ordered and spoken for anyway, right? We didn't.
We didn't order, we didn't order so much supplies.
Was all we were waiting on, is that?
Oh, yeah.
Wax and some pads and for room stuff, but yeah.
Pretty up to speed anyway. Very essential, I mean. All righty.
I would say ninety percent of what we've ordered in the last three months is cleaning, disinfecting, related masks. That's, which is. Intense sanitizer, yeah.
Anywhere you can find it, sanitizer.
Chuck, you mentioned the, that you didn't think you'd be getting to the LED lighting. Is it just a cost issue or a time issue or?
Cost. I, I don't, I can't, uh, I don't want to, maybe I should say. I, I'd like to put, if there's anything left over, looking at the future. We've talked about the future of the elementary, an increase in the budget, and the high school being right. Yeah, no increase, it's actually an increase like five thousand dollars next year. So that's not going to cover the increases that in, in expenditures that we'll have next year. So that multi-district, any money that's left over this year, that multi-district, um, will help pay for that shortfall that's going to come next year in the high school.
The lights and stuff we can do, building reserve, yeah.
And we don't know what's going to happen with tax revenue being what it is through this crisis we're going on, where we'll be the year after that.
Right.
They might just cut everything across the board fifteen percent, I don't know.
Yeah, next, next year, where I think with that combination of the multi-district and the elementary, the revenue going up from the increase in students, that we're good for next year. It, it's the, the year after that's concerning, based on what is the legislature going to do? What kind of shape is our state government going to be in and so on? That's the thing that's really concerning, and have some money in that multi-district agreement to be able to ride through whatever happens, I think is very, very important.
I'd like to see the lights done too.
Well, I just, I have heard, I don't, I haven't seen it myself, but I've heard that there's pretty significant electricity productions.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're half to milliamps, it's crazy.
Yeah, it's a lot less.
We've done pretty much everything of, but about half of the high school, elementary, weight room, resting room, gyms, and so on.
Because I, these are the LEDs, aren't they?
Uh, no, these aren't.
These are not.
They're not?
I don't think so.
There's ballast inside of it.
Have you seen the, have you seen the return, or is it not noticeable?
Um, it's not huge, it's really not, it's just that, it's.
The first year you saw each month was, from the last year, was different.
I think so, done it over a period of.
How long have we been doing this, with lights?
Three or four years, so.
Been in three or four phases.
Through our, our own guys, right?
Larry did a bunch, Larry Sattler.
I suppose if we went back from the beginning to today, we'd probably see it. Annually, just kind of when he is a filling.
Right, because we've kind of done chunk, 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 it's not like the bill just went boom. You know what I mean? It goes down a little bit and then goes down, but, and I just haven't looked at it for, quite honestly, for probably two years. I used to look at it, Patty used to copy and form me every month, so I could see that, and I just haven't.
They've been pretty, pretty even all the way through this last, at least this last year, I noticed. This last month, of course, June or May's is going to be a little bit different, because there wasn't as many of us in the building.
Kids in there, plugging everything in.
Well, we did, the, the heat was on for a while in May, just, it was too cold. No, it's on today, I know. Coming in the mornings, it's cool.
It's fifty six degrees in this building.
I like your sign on your door.
Yeah, keep out the heat in, yeah, got to get.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did we, motion, I would so move, sorry.
I think I.
Well, we already moved and seconded.
Didn't we already?
I thought so.
We talked too long, all right, all those, if no more discussion, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign? Motion carries, sorry about that. Okay, staff coaching resignations.
Yes, I unfortunately have a couple of those. Lisa Scott is resigning from her position as a junior high tennis coach. And also Zane Hanusa is resigning as our assistant boys' high school basketball coach. I'd like to thank Zane for his year of service to the district and being our assistant coach. And Lisa has been involved in the tennis program for quite a while, in one, whether it's high school or junior high, and really appreciate what she's done to help out with the tennis program in our school. So I would recommend accepting those resignations.
I would so move to accept the resignation.
Well, because the junior high and high school will nap down too.
Okay, also move to accept Lisa Scott's resignation.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, any more discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign? Regretfully, motion carries. Zane Hanusa.
I so move to accept Zane Hanusa's resignation.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor? I'm sorry, any discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign? Again, regretfully, motion carries.
Just so you know, I have advertised along with some other positions too, including a, a Cali People's position as a title one paraprofessional for the high school. Two applicants for that position, I think Mrs. Hammond's going to look at doing so towards the end of the week, right? Uh, with that potentially?
Um, I'd like to wait and just see if there's any other applicants and look at another week out.
Okay. But as far as the other ones, we have advertised in the paper, nothing, so.
Let's see if the list is long in the paper.
Yeah. Mary, you want to coach boys' basketball? Okay. Just thought I'd try.
Junior high tennis.
Junior high tennis, yeah.
All righty, consider approval, do we have an extracurricular? Approval extracurricular coaching, okay, no, none, so moving on. Again, back to small font. Consider hiring concessions ticket taker.
I have an applicant. Yeah, Cheryl Gertz in our, our assistant cook is interested in, in doing that, and I'm like, awesome.
Really?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would recommend her for that position.
We'll get her while we talk.
Before she changes her mind. She was the only one who, in staff member, I started with staff member and advertised it and thought.
Seems like a happy person.
Yeah.
She is, she's really excited about it because of how social that type of job is and the number of people you get to see. And so I didn't want to tell her she's going, how tired she's going to be at the end of the night, because.
Yeah, be quiet on that.
Yeah.
It's all good.
She might.
It's all good. No, I'm, I'm glad she wants to.
I'd so move to hire Cheryl Gertz as our concessions ticket taker.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion?
She'll be able to go home and take a nap between two and, and five.
All righty. No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign? Cheryl's hired, all right. Consider yearly increase for non-certified staff. So I guess, um, we talked about this, I guess, earlier. Um, I want, want the certified staff to know that we are, uh, we first talked about a possible freeze earlier in the year, which kind of got out there at the time, we, we didn't feel we were going to be in very good position. Now, if you were going to have some money to offer them. But again, I would like to postpone this until after we, uh, clean up the certified staff. Chuck, you want to table this?
Want to table it?
I would like to, if you guys are okay with that.
Do you, do you envision, um, this would be a, a special meeting at some point to do that? Or is it going to be August?
I suppose that's kind of up to the, how our negotiations goes with the teachers and, um, the board, the, the non-certified staff board. That's kind of up to that board and, which you got, we could, we, if we needed to, Chuck.
You're just getting ready to go? Are you getting ready to head to the mountains?
Uh, sort of, yeah, so, I, I mean, I, I just was really just.
Let's hang out.
Looking for your magical insight.
Well, I, I think we're, I'm pretty happy with where we're at with the teachers, feeling like that we're going to be able to push that through. Hopefully, Wilford cooperates. It was a good meeting last night, I was pretty happy with.
We made our partners last night.
Where we're at, I mean, but, uh, so yeah, we could possibly, if nothing else, um, we could have it figured out before you go in.
Sure. Okay.
You're, you're more than welcome to come to the, um, certified meeting with us too, if you want to sit in for. As far as that goes, but anyway, that's what I would like to ask you to do.
So just table it, do we need a motion to table it then? I so move to table, um, any non-certified staff discussion for the, for the time being.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign? Did I hear from Gary?
I don't think I did.
I didn't hear.
Aye.
Okay, was that on the first one? I'm going to take that as a.
So was he supposed to be in action item?
Attendance agreements?
Yeah, that's.
You gotta go.
Oh, I was reading the old one.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's all right. You got to get to the small font ones.
You can fire me at any time.
My aides are catching up to him.
Are we going to sign the concession?
No, you're not checking signing the concessions. You've already hired someone.
You don't need me.
That's just gone now, okay.
You can be the second. All right, consider approval of attendance agreements.
So you want to do elementary and then high school, huh?
Let's just go right off of the, um, the elementary, for sure.
Yes.
So, um, elementaries.
I'd so move to approve the elementary attendance agreements.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Jerry? Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Pose same sign? Motion carries, move to high schools.
I can.
Been moved and seconded, approve the high school attendance agreements, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign? Opposed, same side? Motion carries. All right, what do we, what do we do on coaches' evaluations?
I'm just going to tell you that they're done.
Good job.
It's the process, as I've expressed before, with the pandemic and school shutdown, the process just drug out considerably. And so typically, this would be done a month ago, or maybe even two months ago, but it is the way it is under the circumstances. Getting people who you would normally see every day to try to get them to go over the evaluation or sign the evaluation, it was difficult. So this is gonna put off those contracts until August meeting.
Oh, I see. Okay, guys got any questions for Chuck as far as evaluations go?
Is that gonna be an issue with sports practice begins and those kind of things? Because sports practice begins like the twelfth of August or something like that.
Usually our meetings before they start, middle of August.
Yeah.
Well, probably have.
I think we, I would do a special meeting, maybe that can be part of that special meeting or something.
Okay. Well, all adjourners.
Well, let's talk about the August meeting real quick.
Well, it's.
Because it's the.
So when does practice start, Shep?
It's the thirteenth or fourteenth, Thursday or Friday.
Could be Thursday.
Thursday the thirteenth of August.
So if we have our meeting Tuesday the twelfth.
Eleventh.
That's soon enough, two days before.
We have, we have your budgets?
I don't, I don't know, there's, they have piled on a bunch of reporting with the TFS, and I don't know that they're gonna, I don't know if I'm gonna have everything done by the eleventh.
They may not start by the eleventh.
But I'm thinking you're gonna have to have two meetings.
Thursday?
One to approve your coaching staff and whatever you're gonna do for the school, and then my budget, and then my budget. The budget meeting and the regular meeting I would like to have on the eighteenth. We have to have the budget approved by the twentieth.
Couldn't we do a special meeting maybe before that, just with?
Yes.
We could do a special meeting in July if you want.
Yeah, it would be better, I think, as of all the organization that coaches need to do, I think it would be smarter if we could do it earlier just because it also adds a layer of support for them, so they don't feel like we're.
Joe, do you have kind of a schedule for July?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I was just looking at the calendar. So are we, so Patty, you're thinking the eighteenth of August for one meeting?
The budget, the final budget and regular, the regular board meeting on the eighteenth.
Okay. And then July, what are you?
We're looking for you.
Down. When are you here to review?
We'll work around you.
Hopefully you got some summer trips.
I have a few.
When you're in town for new shoes and more hay and oats, right?
Right. Boy, I mean, the.
How about the week of the twentieth through the twenty-fourth, is there, is that a good week, Joe?
Um, we.
Twentieth through the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, someday that week.
Right.
Are you gone?
I don't remember if it's that week or the week after.
But this is, this would be the coaches.
This is the coaches. Do you need, well, let me ask this, do you need unanimous on the coaches?
Just a majority?
Just a majority.
It's up to you, it's kind of, you know, if you wanted to be here.
We'd also talk about that yearly increase for the non-certified staff as well.
Yeah, we can.
And maybe in the negotiations.
Maybe negotiations.
So Mark, which week are you?
I don't remember, I was gonna switch it, so I don't remember which one it is.
I may be gone the twelfth through the seventeenth. That's why I'm into vacation.
I would propose something like the twenty.
Someone gone.
Twenty-eighth?
The twenty-eighth.
Of July?
Yeah, something, or, yeah, that evening or that Monday, that's, I think that's a Tuesday, but.
Twenty-seventh is Tuesday. Twenty-eighth is Tuesday.
Yeah, so, neither of those would, I mean.
How about Monday the twenty-seventh?
Monday the twenty-seventh works good.
Yeah.
You good, Jerry, Pat? Okay, so let's have a meeting on the twenty-seventh?
Seventeen.
Sure.
Mark, is that gonna work?
I don't know, I don't remember how I was gonna do my vacation, but that's all right, I'll figure it out if I have to.
Virtual.
After the fourth, too early.
Do the meeting virtual.
No, we'll do it there, we'll do it at the end of July, and I'll just figure it out. If it's a Monday night, that's fine.
It's Monday, July twenty-seventh.
Or it might be that I'll switch my vacation to the week before, and I'll just figure it out. Don't worry about it. We'll figure it out on that one. If I can't make it, I can't make it.
We'll make you zoom in from somewhere.
Virtual.
Well, if I'm in the mountains, there's no Zoom.
That's what I want to be.
My mom's place in the mountains, that's where I'll be. Picking huckleberries, I hope.
Hey. I got some pepper spray. Okay, so I, during the meeting.
Okay, so just so you know, there was never a chat that came up during the meeting, for anyone who wanted, I would have interrupted, so just so you know.
Thank you to all attendees.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so.